Yeah.
Before we call the meeting, we want to thank Dr. LeBlanc for the leftover Halloween candy. I mean, the gift of, yeah, candy. We'll call to order the governance meeting of the Board of Trustees of Tarrant County County for today, Thursday, November 14th. And we'll consider an act on the following agenda. Public comment, we do have two students here, I believe, of the government class, yes, Ben Roy and William Travel. Okay, we will review the proposed action items for the board meeting next week. Item A is consideration approval of the TCCD, excuse me, Diesel Technician Level One Certification Program. Dr. LeBlanc?
Thank you. Thank you, board members. So, we are continuing our conversations with business and industry and other potential partners. And linked to those conversations is one that we had with the city of Fort Worth. We as too many, it's Peter Jordan and his staff that have connected with him. As a result of those conversations, they are recommending the consideration and approval of a Diesel Technician Level One Certificate Program, which will allow us to train their staff. We will use their facilities and their equipment in order to do this. The, there was a question about how this certificate, whether they would get credit for knowledge that they already had and so on. And we do have prior learning assessment that would be linked to this certificate. Right now, we were, we would just be starting the program upon your approval. And we have resources we can use for that. In the future, we anticipate that the program will grow, and at that point, we would need additional resources. And you have that listed in the material that was given to you.
This, this is a level one program? Are you envisioning level, other levels after this?
It could be. Usually, we have the certificate that has the most basic pieces that they want the individuals to learn. And we can add to existing programs. There are technical programs that actually have different certificates that feed into an associate degree, and there's potential for that.
First, a comment. Good job, I think this, this is definitely needed. Will this be open to John Q. Public? I mean, is this open to everybody or just to city of Fort Worth?
Initially, the work is with the city of Fort Worth. The anticipation is that it will grow and will open up to other, other individuals. We have other similar arrangements. For example, one is with Encore also on South Campus. And, and they are actively helping us recruit other entities so that we have a broader partnership and more people can take advantage of it.
Well, I know, I know that the workforce development board definitely has this as one of their top items on their list of people needing to be trained. I know the ISDs definitely need this training as well. So, I think this is a great start. And I'm, you know, again, I just want to advocate for John Q. or Jane Q. Public to have access to that. So, so in regard to, to that, in regard to the question, and I don't know if this is what the happy bar is for, but...
That's the happy bar.
Okay, it's the happy bar, all right. But, but in regard to that, what would be a timeline then that we would, where we would be able to share this kind of information with our constituents, people we serve?
So, Peter, are you prepared for that? Real quickly, upon, upon your approval, we can implement the program right away.
My apologies for, for running late. We're talking about the diesel program. So, the diesel program we're implementing in two phases. The first phase is a clock hour or continuing education approach. The credit portion of that program, we have to ensure that it is, it goes through the SACS accreditation process and so forth, which is going to require that we submit a substantive change in January, and that will be acted on in June of next year. But as soon as this is approved, we can start the CE component of, of the program in terms of delivering that. The good news is that the way the, this program has been designed, students who go through the first year of the program are so in a CE kind of format. Those hours can be converted to credit as well. So, we've structured it in that fashion.
In regard to marketing then, when it is listed as a CE program, is that something that the public will see or is it just to the, our part, our immediate partner?
No, the public, it'll be open to the public.
That's good, all right.
Yes, yes.
Well, thank you.
So, we'll just have to make sure we are advising students about how the CE versus credit works.
Sure. Well, again, good job. I applaud the fact that we're working on this. What, what is the demand for someone with this certification? And what, what do you think the average salary of that person might be?
So, it is, the average sal, let's see. So, we have that in here. The project, the projected job growth for the next 10 years is about 20%.
Each, each year?
Yes. And I know this salary is in here.
The starting, the starting salaries are around 40,000 or thereabouts, but it can be between 35 and 42 or so thousand a year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 3B, consideration approval of contract renewal with ThyssenKrupp Elevator Corporation to provide district-wide elevator maintenance services in the amount of $234,464.16. Yes, sir. We've used ThyssenKrupp at Trinity River for 10 years and the rest of the district for six years to provide maintenance and upgrades for our 57 elevators, four lifts, and two escalators. Questions, discussion?
So, what assurances do we have that we won't have the kind of disaster that will the hospital with that?
Turn your mic on.
And so, what kind of, thank you, what kind of guarantees do they provide or how do we know that they're checking for those kinds of malfunctions?
This is checked every month. Whenever, whenever a problem comes up, like it happened at JPS, they responded immediately and went through it with our, our third-party consultant. But we have a monthly check, visual, and a, I forget what they call it. Maintenance control plan that is set up by them, and there's also a manufacturer's checklist that they go through. And we got a one-hour response on any emergency. And the deal is that our maintenance people do not touch these elevators. If something happens, we call ThyssenKrupp. And that's, that's clear in the contract? That's clear within our policy and procedures, the way we operate. Okay.
Thank you.
Any further questions, discussion? Item C, consideration approval of contract with Freedom Construction to provide Northeast Campus Academic Classroom Building and Health Science Building Classroom renovations in the amount of $156,451.07. This project has been evaluated by ELY? The ELY Advisory Panel for Basic Renovation and Furniture. It's just basic facelift, paint, carpet, ceiling, lights. Questions, discussion?
Yes, I do, I'm sorry. I just have a clarification. I had posed the question about if there was an industry standard that was being used to evaluate the classrooms, and I don't believe there is. Is that correct, Gary?
Well, the industry standard is built by design professionals with many years of experience.
Okay. So, based on that, what, I guess, what, what do they use? What are they comparing it to, I guess? Do you, are there other, other colleges?
Other colleges, other businesses.
Okay.
Just years and years of experience in, in working with furniture designers and all.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Item D, consideration approval of lease and maintenance agreement, contract renewal with Chambers Engineering LLC to provide brick assessment scaffolding at the Northwest Campus in the amount of $361,776.07. This will continue to keep our students, faculty, and staff safe while we're in the process of developing the restructure of the Northwest Campus, the development of the Northwest Campus, excuse me. Questions?
I do.
Mr. Greenhill? Is this a renewal, did you say?
Yes, sir.
It's a renewal?
Yes, sir.
So, we're not just starting it? This is, this is...
No, sir. You renewed it for the past three years. This is the fourth year.
My, my question is, what would this, what have we spent already on the scaffolding to this point?
About 1.2.
1.2 million? Okay. Thank you.
Item E, consideration approval of contract with Trevino Group, Inc. to provide Trinity River Campus Fitness Center renovations in the amount of $250,526.31. Again, this is a refresh of the facility. This is an 18-year-old facility now. We've been in there 10 years, but we didn't touch it on our rebuild. Questions? Item F, thank you, Mr. Prather. Consideration approval of Northeast Campus replat of 7.4 acre out parcel in preparation of sale to the city of Hurst in the amount of, not, not applicable. Carol Bracken.
Good afternoon, trustees. I'm handing out to you a page. You have this in your, your brochure, but this is a little bit bigger, and I personally found it easier to read. You may recall that the board previously approved the execution of a contract with the city of Hurst to sell an out parcel of about 7.4 acres to the city of Hurst, where they plan to build an animal adoption center and a dog park. In the process of going through the title review process, we learned two things. The city, or actually, three things. The city had originally planned to access the tract they were building through adjacent property that they already own to the north. The cit, the title company informed them that they were not willing to accept that as an access plan, and that if we didn't come up with something different, they would have accepted to that in the city's title policy. So, the city came back to us and asked if we would consider allowing them access, look down at the bottom of the property, and you'll see, it says TCC Road, if they would allow us to give them access that way. Gary and I had a, threw some negotiations with them. This, right here, is an existing roadway that is a public access route for Encore, for Encore to go around and up the property to access some existing transformers or other equipment they have up there. It's not a public road. As it stands right now, TCC maintains that road, including providing lighting and everything else. We cut a deal, subject to your approval, with the city of Hurst whereby we will dedicate just the piece of it that's shown at the bottom to the public as a public street. At that point, the city of, if, they will, they will pave it, they will install curb and guttering, they will install lighting, and they will maintain it all at the city's cost in the future. That's, that way, we'll have access to the property, the ability to use the road, and we won't be writing checks to maintain it. So, that's the first thing. The second thing we discovered, look on the right-hand side, and you'll see there are some easements that are listed over there. We discovered that one of them, instead of just being an easement, was that a little tiny sliver of the property was actually conveyed to Encore. So, in order to maintain the 7.4 acre size on the tract to be conveyed, we shifted the property line ever so slightly to the left to maintain that 7.4 acreage. So, what you are looking at is a replat of the property that will become what is now going to be called Tract D. We are asking you to approve the chancellor executing this plat. What we will do with it is as follows. At the closing of this transaction, the first thing that happens is that the city of Hurst will wire the money to the title company. Then, we will execute the deed, giving them the title to that property. And then, we will have the pre-executed plat signed by both the city and us, and we will give authority for it to be recorded in the deed records, right after the deed is recorded. That will allow the city to get a title policy on the 7.4 acres that does not have any exception for access. So, I know this is a little complicated, but that's it. Do I have any questions?
No sidewalks, all right?
No sidewalks.
No sidewalks.
Although I do believe the city's planning to put some in in connection with the dog park.
Is there any impact, negative impact to the, the execution of all of this as far as the timeline? We're still, okay?
We are still, we should still be able to close before December the 13th. And there's no impact on the, on the amount of money to be paid under the contract. Yes, ma'am?
Turn your microphone.
That being a public road, will that be for public utilization? Or is it just a public road for purposes of the city having access to it?
No, it's a true public road. In that fashion, in that area right now is, if you go up there and look, there is a, a well-maintained, road-based road. It's already there, it's available. We use it to access the property. Encore uses it to access their facilities. And to the extent there's anybody up there that wants to use it from the public, they can do so. But it's kind of a road to nowhere right now. It only goes up to those transformers.
Any further questions, discussion? Great work from a great woman of Fort Worth, yes, of Tex, of Texas. Item G, consideration approval of Northwest Campus Fire Training Field LP Gas Line Replacement. This is a deductive change order with cable plumbing in the amount of $31,312.09 credit. Yes, sir. This is a return of owner's contingency funds. Questions? Thank you. Item H, consideration and approval of purchase from Dell EMC for upgrading storage controllers and increasing storage at the TCCD data center and the disaster recovery site, the amount of $126,594.14 not to exceed. Mr. Pacheco?
Yes, the warranty for our Dell EMC backup device is about to expire, and part of that warranty is on the controller and the storage device, and that's no longer supported by Dell. So, we're having to upgrade the equipment so that the, our new warranty will actually cover that, that equipment. And speaking to your question, there will be no downtime for anybody on there. This is on the backend part of it, so.
Would you please clarify what all the controller, is that, is that CPU storage? Is that arrays? Could you talk a little bit more about what that includes?
Sure. So, the storage enclosure itself, it holds the hard drives that will be actual repositories for the backup information coming here from the data center. It does contain memory. It has a controller chip on there that controls how the information is written to the storage arrays.
Further questions? Item I, consideration approval of the purchase of two-year... Mr. President, I've got a question. Oh, sorry? Are we storing that? Is that on campus or campuses or is it in a, a separate location?
It's at a separate location at our Allen Data Center.
Okay, thank you. Further questions? Item I, consideration approval of purchase of two-year Elsevier HESI Legacy Cohort, quote, "Providing access codes to the nursing department graduating class of 2021," in the amount of $137,402.50.
Yes, this is for the, our Elsevier access codes that our Fall 2021 nursing cohorts will be using. It's for 170 nursing students. And Elsevier is used for the, the testing. I can get more details if we need to.
Any questions, discussion? Thank you. Item J, consideration and approval of the purchase of resolutions slash contracts for TCCD 20,019-20. Insurance renewal with McGriff, Seibels, and Williams, RHSB, and Higginbotham in the amount of $1,218,238.
Hi, good afternoon. Yes, sir. We are up for our insurance renewal for the year. It's, it ends November 30th, and it's for 18 different lines of coverage that we currently have in place. And we have decided, or we have asked our carriers to make this a short-term policy so we can make the renewal date the fiscal year, so starting September 1st instead of November 30th.
And this does include ENO insurance for board members?
Yes, sir. It's under the ELL, Educator's Legal Liability Policy that we have in place. Yes, sir.
Just trying to cover you, Mr. Greenhill. Thank you. Any questions, discussion? Thank you.
Thank you.
Chancellor? Okay, we can review the schedule of upcoming facility projects. Item A, 4A, and also schedule of upcoming information technology projects. The Dynamic Duo.
Do you want us to go through each one of these, or you just want to ask questions about the ones?
Yeah. It's on the left side of your book.
We do look really good up here, so.
What is the Palo Alto software?
It's our endpoint appliance that helps protect our internet traffic.
I'm sorry. It's, I'm sorry, say it again.
It's a appliance that helps protect our internet network traffic. So it inspects the data coming in and out of our school.
Questions, discussion? Thank you. No, they're coming up. They're coming up. Item C. Scheduling Design Process, Dr. Elva LeBlanc.
So, good afternoon again. Thank you for this opportunity to give you an update on the Scheduling and Facilities Utilization Principle. Just to refresh everyone's memory, each principle has a champion. And working on the principle is an advisory panel. And then you have work teams that address the action items that bubble up during the, during the work. So the Scheduling and Facilities Utilization Principle, when the advisory panel was pulled together, we agreed to set a philosophy that would guide us in doing our work. And the main focus of the philosophy is to have a college-wide, multi-year schedule informed by pathways that's focused or student-centered. And in the, the work is, the ultimate goal is for the students to get through and reach their educational goals. So the work team that addressed the recommendations that I will be sharing with you today was the Scheduling Design Team. And again, in addition to the philosophy, they created a team charter that would give them the parameters for the work that they were going to be doing. And it's good that they had this because they researched for over a year in pulling together the recommendations. So their commitment was to develop a process for designing a multi-year schedule that supports the students using lessons learned from other institutions and also a review of our processes and procedures. So they looked at what other institutions, the same size as ours, were doing and what worked for them, what didn't work for them. So when we talk about a schedule of classes, it feels like it just magically appears on the web. And actually, it has four phases to it. The schedule design, the first phase of the schedule design is the actual schedule development. And that's when we decide what sections to offer, when to offer them, and where to offer them. The second phase of this is the section building. And that's when the work of entering the data linked to each section into Colleague. Then we have the space optimization. This is the process of using a TCC Room scheduler. We call it AdAstra. It's a software that allows us to assign rooms to sections to achieve the most efficient use of space. And then finally, the fourth section is the section maintenance. And that's where we add faculty names and any other information that's important to students. For example, the TCC Plus, if a student is interested in that, that information would be on the schedule. So what are our current processes at Tarrant County College? I know you're going to be surprised, but we have six campuses with six different processes right now. The schedules are developed independently, both internally within the campuses and among campuses. Their inconsistent approach to evaluating data linked to the schedule. And we have over 250 individuals entering data into Colleague, impacting the schedule development and the execution. The section building is a tedious process that's labor and focus-intensive. I don't have anyone in the room that actually enters those data, but they will tell you there are multiple screens for, that they have to access and enter information into for each section that's created. We also have a schedule development that is heavily reliant on what we call rollover of sections. And we have section building that continues throughout the four phases of schedule design, which undermines space optimization and compromises the student view of the schedule. And you'll see how that happens. So why, why do we do these things? First, in terms of entering data directly into Colleague, that's what we're familiar with. Those were decisions that were made in 1999, and they made sense then. However, we've evolved since then. And we have more campuses, more students, more sections. So the process is familiar, and that's why we use it. However, as you can see from the problems that we've encountered, it's intensive, detailed work requiring critical thinking. It's very time-consuming. So who are the individuals entering these data? They're the administrative assistants of the department chair, the deans. And they are, in addition to entering data, they are answering the phone. They are helping students. They are helping the staff. And everything that they do throughout the day requires multitasking at the same time that they are to be doing detailed work. In addition, because of the complexity of Colleague and working with Colleague, we have to provide extensive training every semester. In terms of the rollover of sections, again, why do we, why do we use that process? Well, that's what we know. And it does provide a baseline schedule. However, sections need to be manually modified, deleted, and rebuilt. So you have the rollover schedule, and then the sections have to be redone. So redundant work. Often, the students will see the schedule before it is finalized, and so it will not be accurate. And there are many, many opportunities for errors when you're having to delete and then add again.
Could you define rollover of sections for me?
Yes. So for example, when we are creating the fall, let's say we're creating the Fall 2020 schedule, we rolled over the Fall 2019 schedule for them to view.
As a starting point.
Correct. So what are the outcomes of our current process? And this is where you can look at your pop quiz that you have in front of you that was right under the chocolate bar. So TCC offers about 9,600 sections of classes a semester. Under the current process, the college builds and cancels about 2,850 sections to arrive at a complete schedule. On average, 30% of the sections are built after students can view the schedule. And about 2,700 sections are built after the first day the schedule is live. Now, we made a commitment a few years ago to allow the students to have access to the schedule several weeks before they had to register. And the purpose of that was so that they could plan ahead. Okay, so that sounded good. But when 30% of the sections are built after they're able to view, they're really not able to plan the way we had envisioned. So potential impacts of errors in section building. First is the student experience is not as positive as we would like for it to be. It impacts their ability to create a true schedule that they can work from. If they're working, which a very high percentage of our students do work, and their schedule has to be changed, it can impact their grades if they're having to miss classes. And if they're having to drop the classes, it can impact their refund. There's also, every time we make an error in Colleague, that error impacts data in Blackboard, Web Advisor, Student Planning, and TCC Plus as a few examples. So when we correct the error, there are all kinds of email flying around, going to the individuals that have to make the corrections on Blackboard, Web Advisor, Student Planning, and et cetera. It also impacts our room scheduling. So sections built after optimization, which is about 30% of the sections, results in us underutilizing space. So in the research that we did, we discovered that there were often rooms that could accommodate 50 students with 20 students. And then there were rooms that would accommodate 25 students with 30 and 35 students. So we were also overutilizing some of the spaces. And more importantly, we discovered that we often double-booked. This also impacts our state funding. When we have errors in any of our reports, we are very conservative. We do not submit any of that to the coordinating board. And there's room for us to lose contact our reimbursement as a result. In the business world, you talk about process obstacles, and they're called the eight wastes. And I won't go through each one of them, but as we were doing our research, we discovered that we could connect the dots to one of each of the eight wastes. And when you look at all the having to do and redo of the work over production, waiting for email to get to the right persons, and the more important, the non-utilized talent. So we have really talented people as our administrative assistants that are trying very hard to do all of the above. And they do an exceptional job. But those skills could be used in other ways as well. So I think you will agree with the advisory panel that we needed a new process. So the recommendation for the future schedule design process is for all six campuses to use the same one. Also to have consistent data that they would all evaluate in determining what's sections to offer. And to go from 250 individuals entering data to 10. We would also eliminate the rollover of sections and instead give all of the campuses a data package that would include information about the sections that have been offered before, the sections that were canceled, projected enrollments, and such as that. We would also allow them the opportunity to use all those data in making those decisions instead of using the rollover. We would have a centralized section building. And this would be done by our Academic Support Services team. We have 10 individuals there that could enter the data rather quickly without any interruptions. So this would be advantageous to the campuses. And it would allow us to be more efficient and effective and reduce room for error. So the next steps would be... Ah, I skipped it. Am I pushing the wrong side? What am I doing wrong? Okay. So we recognize, we dream big, and we recognize that what we really need is an online tool portal page of some type that combines data review, the decision-making process, and the section building web form into one seamless experience. So that's what we are striving for. That will take time to accomplish. And Bob is saying, yes, it will take time. It won't be done tomorrow. But what can we do right away? So right away, we could have the data, prepare a data package that all of the campuses would receive. And then create a web form that the campuses would use to put in the sections that they want that would go then to the academic group that would put the data into Colleague. So we want to do both because we don't... You'll see that we have to work way in advance in order to get the schedule developed, especially looking at a multi-year schedule. So who will be responsible for what? The schedule development will still be the responsibility of the campuses. The section building, where you actually enter data into Colleague, will be the Academic Support Services. Space optimization will be a campus responsibility. And section maintenance will require a collaborative, a collaborative effort on the part of the campuses, the Academic Support Services, and actually, other entities of the college. For example, when we have to wait to hire faculty, that involves HR before we can put the names in the schedule. So almost every area impacts all areas of the college. In terms of a communication plan timeline, we started informing people in September and getting feedback from the stakeholders so that if we were, if we had gaps or something was missing, they would inform us. And you can see that we've visited with just about all of the stakeholders. And we plan to continue the conversation as we begin to implement the recommendations. Of particular interest are the instructional leaders who are very heavily involved in the schedule development. And when we deliver the data package and the web form, et cetera, we will need to have several meetings with them to ensure that they know and understand all of the materials that we have prepared for them. Now, for some of you, this may not appear like an aggressive schedule design, but it really is an aggressive schedule design timetable. In order to get all of these ideas in place, the soonest that we could implement them in developing a schedule would be for, we would begin June of 2020 for the spring schedule of 2021. And so it doesn't seem like it's very aggressive, but it is, given the complexities of developing a schedule and making the changes that we need to make. a schedule and making the changes that we need to make. And I'm open for questions.
It's a huge job.
It is.
I know we have questions. What is the projected cost of doing this?
Well, Bob, I would need to, it's, we are using our own personnel in developing the web pages. We're using our own personnel in pulling together the data packages and so on. So, it's really redirecting our resources in a different way to become more effective and efficient. In terms of changing from the 250 individuals that enter data into Colleague to 10, we already have the 10 that know how to do that well. So, actually, it will allow us to utilize those 250 individuals more in terms of serving the students and the faculty, which is why they were hired in the first place.
And this is a never-ending job. You know, as we redesign classrooms and build new buildings, it just adds to the complexity.
Yes.
Constant updates.
Yes, sir.
Unbelievable.
And you see all the different softwares and the different stakeholders that are involved. It's a lot. Very good. Thank you for your time.
Oh, thank you. So, as you can see, certain amount of this principal work is going to be, and I've mentioned this before, uncovering inefficiencies. And you asked me before, what are you talking about? Here's a good example. Probably won't get a better example than this. And so, there's a lot of work that goes into uncovering the inefficiencies, you can see, and then certainly building a solution and now implementing such. And so, but one thing I want you to keep in mind is that, you know, this work, the measure will not be a number in order to determine success. But hopefully, you can see the success will be, in effect, the staff in terms of the efficiencies of working, but more importantly, the service to students that will provide them in building a schedule, helping their retention, increasing their, you know, the graduation rates and such. So, not everything is going to be obvious as it relates to, you know, increasing productivity because there's no number here to point to, but certainly, you can see these processes will result in a positive impact for the institution. So, thank you all.
And this will go hand-in-hand with the pathways program, make it efficient. Okay, 4D, fiscal year 2019 audit and comprehensive annual financial report, Mr. Jim Fitz.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
All right, thanks for having me here. We are substantially complete with our audit of the district's financial statements. We have gone through the results of the audit with management, with the chancellor, and with the Audit and Finance Committee. And because of that, and because of my accountant, and I get excited about numbers and could talk for a while, I've been told I need to limit it to the highlights here today. So, that's what I'll do. I do want to point out, you'll see in the fiscal year 19 comprehensive annual financial report, when that's issued, that the district received the GFOA certificate for excellence in financial reporting for its fiscal year 18 report. It's the 27th consecutive year the college has received that. So, that's a great reflection on Nancy Chang, Stan Vick, Lindsey Brandon, and the college's accounting personnel. The auditor's report, we plan to issue an unmodified report on the financial statements or a clean opinion, some people may say. Just a couple of financial highlights. Last year, when I presented the board, we talked a lot about new accounting standards and OPEB, other post-employment benefits, because there's a big new accounting rule effective for fiscal year 18 and made a lot of big changes. This year, we get a year off, no big changes in accounting rules, so nothing to report along those lines. The district ended the fiscal year with net position of just over $1 billion. Increase in that position for the fiscal year of $31 million. The results of our audit did not result in the reporting of any material weaknesses in internal control over financial reporting and no significant grant compliance issues that were required to report. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Item 4E, chancellor.
Sure, thank you. Mr. Fitz, in our retreat and some of our other discussions we've had, one of the issues that the board wanted to entertain was the, related to consent agenda consideration as you do your work. And to date, we do not include much in consent agenda. There are other organizations that do so, and some of you brought that to the attention. Prior to that was also a consideration of not only what items came to consent, but what dollar threshold would come to a consent. We currently have $100,000 threshold, and that's my signing authority. After reviewing that, I wouldn't recommend changing that at all, that we continue with the $100,000 threshold or my signing authority, and therefore, you would have to act on anything, continue to act on anything over $100,000. What you may want to consider is something over $100,000 as it relates to considering on a consent agenda. For example, some colleges, municipalities will have a signing authority of, let's say, $100,000, but anything under $500,000, or I think the city is anything under $1 million goes on a consent agenda. So, that's one thing that you may want to consider, as you've asked me to bring this forward, the dollar threshold as it relates to consent items. The second would be deductive change orders, if you saw one today, that would be included in a consent item. So, I bring this to this meeting because we've had this discussion in the past, and I told you I'd do a little bit of due diligence and come back with a framework to have that discussion. So, the floor is open for you.
Did you say the city of Fort Worth does $1 million?
I am told that, Mayor Barr, do you recall? Okay, Susan is not here today. We can come back to that, but I believe that's what I was told. Yes, Carol. Carol says that is correct. So, the city of Fort Worth has a dollar threshold. Anything under $1 million will be considered as a consent agenda item.
I think that's reasonable. As many of, as I said before, the $100,000 threshold was set many years ago as a result of some issues that we had that, I'm not sure how it was done, but the consent agenda, but I think $1 million is, that's my view.
I like the idea of the deductive change orders being on the consent agenda.
But we could still discuss these items.
Oh, absolutely. Sure.
Yeah, governance, but in the board meeting, yes.
I think the higher amount, considering how well our business is run, that's, I would be comfortable with a million.
Well, even if it's on a consent agenda, you can pull it.
Which could pull it.
And pull it and discuss it if we'd like to do that. But I have no problem with the higher threshold.
And that would give us more time to talk about key indicators, et cetera.
Mayor?
I have no problem with raising the chancellor's approval authority beyond $100,000.
I think, I think we looked at other colleges.
I did look at that, and that's the standard within the state. I'm just reporting back what you asked me to find out, and based upon what I found out, I would not have any rationale to say to raise that from the work I did, but certainly, that's the board's consideration.
I'm fine. If consensus of the board is to go with 100, leave it at 100, that's fine with me. And I'm fine with, I'm fine with the consent agenda, $1 million. The more we can do to simplify the routine stuff we're doing with the letter off we are.
All right, we'll come back with that then. Thank you.
And the next item?
Yes, the next item, you know, from time to time, I've been asked by you and others related to the whole concept, you hear it around the country, free community college and programs in different states and different institutions. And I'll say, first of all, nothing's free. So, there are always catchers and qualifiers to a lot of these programs, whether they be dollar amount, whether they be income level, whether they be GPA. And so, one of the considerations we had in exploring this and looking at others around the country is how they were doing it and the things that was working for them and that were not working for them. And we've come back with this discussion specifically with the Fort Worth ISD over the last nine months or so. Dr. Kapole is here. He's been involved in representing the college in work with the Fort Worth ISD, and the interest has been taken up by the Rainwater Foundation related to the concept, if you will. And they've visited Atlanta and Buffalo and Nashville and have done a lot of research along those lines. And today, I just wanted to inform you that we are moving forward with pursuing such an initiative with the Fort Worth ISD, and Rainwater Foundation is taking a leadership role in that and to really address the issue of high school students being prepared for college and/or career. And so, the effort will speak to that. Likely next month, we'll have Jeremy Smith from Rainwater come and talk a little bit about it, and we envision in the next six months or so, being, having something very specific and of public nature to really talk about specifically about how we will address this. But I know this has come up a few times. It's moving. It's moving quite well, and I wanted to get it on your radar today. So, that's really all I had to report on at this point.
In the context of those comments, with regard to dual credit, early college high school and so forth, within Tarrant County, it varies in terms of how that, who pays?
Yes.
Whether it's the local school district or the parents, or whether it's free to the students and so forth. So, I would appreciate, as we talk about this initiative, that we also be sure that we understand where we are right now in terms of how that's handled.
Yes.
It does vary.
And we can certainly report where we are right now and tell you how we got to different places with different organizations. And whether that becomes standardized or not, I couldn't tell you. There are a lot of dynamics related to that, school districts, socioeconomic status, the actual relationship, who is quote "paying for what" in the relationship. And so, there's a lot involved there, but we're happy to come back and talk about that.
And different local grants and things, initiatives such as this.
Right.
In some cases and not in others.
Right.
Would this just be with the Fort Worth ISD or other school districts?
The intent will be to grow it. Right now, the concentration, the planning work has been done with Fort Worth ISD. Other school districts have the same issue. It will be really a matter of the rollout and talking with Rainwater, but we've already had that discussion to implement it beyond Fort Worth ISD. So, that's already been discussed, but I don't have anything to say related to any other particular school district at this time, though.
I have a question that was asked me, which I gave my famous answer. I don't know.
Turn your mic on.
I'm sorry, thank you.
It was regard to the issue on the bond election, and by the way, congratulations, Mr. Chancellor and staff. Thanks to everyone who voted, all of the citizens of Tarrant County for approving that bond issue. It spoke to building a new building on Northwest Campus that would house an early college high school with Fort Worth ISD. And so, the question was, well, there's an existing early college high school on Northwest Campus. How would those relate?
That would come down, right, Carrie? Yeah, the current one will come down. It is not an adequate facility, and that arrangement in terms of building that will be in cooperation with the Fort Worth ISD with a financial consideration.
Okay, so the student population at the existing early college high school is from all over?
At that high school, it's Marine Creek, Zarina, about 400 students.
About 350. And you would like to grow that early college high school, and the new early college high school building will afford us an opportunity to adjust that.
When you say grow, do you mean, I'm talking about where would the student populations come from, what districts? That was pretty much the question.
From all of the area districts that feed into Marine Creek Legion High School. Fort Worth ISD, from all of the different high schools, middle schools.
So, the students, okay, so the students will be only from Fort Worth ISD, not the other area school districts?
No.
What would happen with Eagle Mountain?
Because we have early college high schools in different campuses. So, is the impetus of your question about accessibility to other independent school districts?
Yes, so.
May I?
So, if you will recall, the early college high school started with the Lake Worth ISD, and it was, it was very, very small. It could not support the, it couldn't support it. The district decided they could not. So, they merged. We invited Fort Worth ISD to join them, and all of the Lake Worth students then transferred to Fort Worth ISD. So, there is potential for some of that to happen. With that said, if we wanted an early college high school with Eagle Mountain Saginaw, that would technically be a separate conversation. The current agreement, MOU, is with Fort Worth ISD. And, but I will say to you that there are students from the other districts that want in, that have transferred to Fort Worth ISD in order to attend the early college high school there.
Okay. And I believe that was a concern that other students could become a part of the early college high school program who might not properly be in Fort Worth ISD. So, the answer to that is those students can transfer in Fort Worth ISD in order to apply to the early college.
They've worked with them before. And we have, with Lake Worth, we had a special agreement, so we continue the dual enrollment program with them and supporting them that way. With Eagle Mountain Saginaw, we have the dual enrollment, and we're also looking at the career and technology courses and sharing of facilities for that. The value exchange that we've talked about before is with Eagle Mountain Saginaw. So, our partnerships differ from district to district depending on what their needs might be and what their requests are of us.
So, that was my final question. Are there school districts in Tarrant County that are not served by our early college high school, or where their students are not eligible to attend? And that was the concern, that we would have early college high schools available to all students in Tarrant County.
It's a collaborative effort with Tarrant County College and the Independent School District, so it isn't totally our call. It has, they have to want to dance as well.
And that question came from a parent who had moved here from Austin and was somewhat familiar with what she had experienced or knew about Austin and was trying to relate that to where she would place her student here. And so, I didn't really have the answers, and it's a rather complex issue to navigate because as I understand, that it has to come from the high school or the middle school and go through the high school. And so, that's a suggestion that I have. To answer the question, how does one enter an early college high school in Tarrant County? I think that our district, TCC, needs to have some information on our website so that parents can access to know how to navigate that.
So, we, you know, I will make sure of that. But it is important. Those are very successful. And... successful, and we want people to be informed, thank you for that.
Okay, any further questions? The TCC Board will conduct a closed meeting now, as authorized by Section 551 of the Texas Government Code, in order to A, seek the advice of its attorneys, B, deliberate real property matters, C, deliberate personnel matters, or D, deliberate security devices or security audits. There will be no action taken, but we will reconvene.
Say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. And then we're going to need about five minutes before we reconvene a new meeting.